I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
And I'll call this meeting City Council Regular Meeting in City Hall, Council Chambers, 389 Spruce Street in Morgantown, West Virginia, 26505, on Tuesday, December 3rd at 7:00 PM to order. As is broadcast live via YouTube on the City of Morgantown website. If the clerk would please take a vote.
Yes. Bill Koepke?
Here.
Wheezy Michael?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Here.
Danielle Trumbull?
Here.
David Hirschbacher?
Here.
Brian Butcher?
Here.
Mayor Abu Ghanim?
Present. All right. We have the approval of minutes for November 20th, 2024 Special Meeting Minutes, November 20th, 2024 Regular Meeting Minutes, November 26th, 2024 Special Meeting Minutes, and November 26th, 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Any changes or do I have a motion?
I had one correction I sent to the city clerk about changing the spelling of the All Center, but she noted that previously.
Do I have a motion?
Moved to approve.
All right. Proclamation?
Yes.
Good, good, good. All right. Today, for correspondence, we have the International Human Rights Day proclamation with Annie Karne York of the Human Rights Commission Chair.
And Ashley Swanson, who is the Commissioner on the Human Rights Commission. Secretary even.
Hello?
Good day, sir. How are you?
And well. All right. Well, like, hold on. I gotta have the microphone. Right here. Okay. And then there's our camera, for those watching around the world in YouTube land. Whereas International Human Rights Day is celebrated annually around the world to commemorate the adoption of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights by the General Assembly of the United Nations on December 10th, 1948. And whereas the Universal Declaration laid the cornerstone for acceptance of the inalienable rights of equality, freedom, and justice for all, and enshrines the inalienable rights that everyone is entitled to as a human being, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, language, political, or other opinions, national or social origin, property, birth, or other status, and that every individual is responsible for upholding and protecting the human rights of others. And whereas 2024 marks the 76th anniversary of the adoption of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, a treaty that is credited with reducing human suffering and improving the daily lives of millions of people globally by affirming the ending commitment to its fundamental principles. And whereas the City of Morgantown was built on native lands by generations of colonists, immigrants, and others who chose it as their home to unite and to create a diverse community where people can live and work harmoniously without fear of discrimination. And whereas the City of Morgantown is committed to maintaining laws and policies that provide opportunity and protection for its people to participate equally in local government, employment, housing, and public accommodation without regard to race, sex, religion, color, national origin, ancestry, blindness, disability, gender identity, sexual orientation, familial status, or veteran status. Now therefore, I, Joe Abu Ghanim, Mayor of Morgantown, West Virginia, do with this proclamation Tuesday, December 10th, 2024, as International Human Rights Day. In the City of Morgantown, we encourage all residents to work together in the coming year to nurture, respect, and protect the human rights, sorry, enunciated in the Universal Declaration of Human Rights and its extensions over the years. Thank you.
Didn't seem nearly that long when I was...
I had to use my teacher voice. And, oh.
And if you would like to please say a couple things for us?
Can do that. A comment was recently made. Well, if all the Human Rights Commission is going to do is make proclamations, you're doing a hell of a good job. So here we are doing a hell of a good job again. The purpose of proclamations is to make people aware of diverse issues, i.e. diversity, that we're not just homogenous, we're not a single people, that there are a lot of different ethnicities and colors and religions and gender identities, et cetera, in Morgantown, and that we need to honor that. The code of the city, ordinances and charter even, protects rights that are not protected by the state. Veteran status and gender identity are not protected. So that Morgantown does that is a big deal, and people should know about it. I did a search two days ago looking to see who else has got Human Rights Commissions in West Virginia. And kind of they seem to be getting smaller in number. There are currently seven, which surprised me because I thought there were only three. There's Charleston, Huntington, Morgantown, Wharton, Wheeling, Beckley, and Fairmont. So we intend in the next couple of months to contact the other Human Rights Commissions in the state and exchange ideas and see if we can learn anything from what they're doing and anything we can share to help them do something other than proclamations. We have our International Human Rights Day celebration, where we're awarding an individual and a group who provide great service for civil and human rights to people of Morgantown. The individual award goes to E. Fox, has worked diligently for years, but this year especially distinguished herself by arranging much of what went around with the anniversary of the 1964 Civil Rights Act. She wrote a book including bios from local residents in the history of civil rights in Morgantown. So hopefully she'll bring some of those with her to share at the ceremony. The group award goes to the Morgantown area Youth Services Project, which I always call program, but that's okay. They represent and harbor and counsel and help kids get their lives together. Juveniles under the age of 18, usually who are tied up with court system, are sent to MACAP. And MACAP does an amazing job of counseling and getting them services and making sure that they have a place to stay at night and hopefully counsel them away from bad habits. So they're both quite deserving as award recipients. The ceremony is open to the public. It will take place at the All Center, formerly the Garlow House. Do not pull into the driveway. You will not get out. But there is Sunday free parking across the street, and unless you change that from last year, going with it. So it's from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, same time as somebody's potluck dinner, but I'm sure you can be a little late for that. And then there are two Starbucks stores who are donating pastries and coffee and other drinks for our pleasure, and a classical violinist will be playing. We have nothing else to add. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Celine.
Anyone want to handle it?
I, yeah, go.
All right. So Item B applies to our mayor, so I'm going to take that item. So there is an award that the National League of Cities puts out that's called, actually, it was put out this year as part of the National League of Cities Centennial Year Initiatives, and it was called Centennial Under Forty Impact Awards. And it was seeking to recognize and celebrate the achievements of elected officials under the age of 40 from National League of City member cities. This endeavor aimed to spotlight young, diverse elected leaders from across the country who significantly impact, significantly impact their communities through their dedication to public service, effective governance, governance, and community development. And award recipients were highlighted and honored at the National League of Cities City Summit in Tampa Bay, Florida as part of this 100-year anniversary celebration. And Councilor Trumbull and I were both in attendance. And imagine when you look up on the big Jumbotron and there's hundreds of people, and there's this board and a list of 40 people, and our mayor is first on the list, probably by virtue of his last name with an A. So, but we'd like to think it's because of our community and his leadership. So the criteria are things like you have to be an elected official under 40, and you have to demonstrate excellence in leadership, and have to be from a member city. And they asked to highlight a specific project or initiative, and we're not sure what that was. Anyone here know what that was?
I legitimately have been trying to find out.
We really don't know?
Would really like to know.
We really don't know. So I...
By email, they have not told.
I made up some things. So I have been impressed in our mayor's willingness to apply. When a newly-elected First Ward Representative moved out of state, he was one of, I don't know, four or five candidates who were interested in the position, and then willing and successfully ran for office in the First Ward and was successful. They had their, I think it was the first neighborhood sign in the First Ward. Brian and I are still working on the Seventh Ward for a gazillion years. They've been trying to get one up, but really innovative, interesting design in the First Ward with some posts involved, some wooden, I don't know if they're wooden, they're wooden actual, but really cool-looking sign in the First Ward. Neighborhood Halloween party with it closed down a street, and they kept a parade, and lots of, lots of, very, very positive in the First Ward. They have a super well-organized neighborhood sale, almost as good as the one in South Park.
Almost, not quite.
I'm not sure, but right in there. A lot of student involvement, probably related to the fact of his occupation as a high school teacher, but makes a big impact on students to be able to be involved with tree plantings with the tree board, a mock city council meeting when they have Government Week that he works with the clerk on, brought the Great Race into town. And if you're not familiar with the Great Race, it's a rally of vintage cars that came through our downtown that will just kind of build, hopefully, every year that it continues. And also a keen eye for an airport, because he grew up in New Dulles. So I have appreciated working with him, and I thought it was super cool. National League of Cities recognized him, and sometime they're promised to send him an award. We have not seen it, but since this is out in the media, we're honoring you tonight. So congratulations.
Thank you. And if any of you did nominate, like, I would like to know so I could thank you personally, because I did ask them that question. So I will find out. I don't, I don't have any words. So thank you guys very much.
Congratulations.
And I didn't know it was on the meeting until I was checking an update, and I must have just looked over it.
No, you weren't supposed to be surprised. You weren't supposed to see it.
It was right up until the end. All right. Next, thank you, Bowler. It was very timely. We really appreciate it. Next, we move on to our public hearings. Do we have a...
Yeah, but we don't have anything for public hearings.
What am I, yes, that's right. Okay. I mixed up public hearings and public portion. So we are done with the public hearing, and on to unfinished business. We have boards and commissions. We have three.
We have to remember. Oh, good. All right. I'd like to nominate Jenny Dinsmore to be on the mountain line, Transit Authority Board of Directors at reappointment.
Second.
Proclamation?
Yes. I'd like to do, unless you're stepping in.
No, I'm trying to remember.
Do Laura lie for the Land Reuse and Preservation Agency?
And I don't know who's gonna do...
Proclamation?
I don't know who's gonna do William Petros, but I'd be glad to if...
I move to reappoint. He's on the planning commission. Bill Petros to the planning commission.
Yes, thank you.
Second.
Proclamation?
Yes.
And there's a person here that I think I'll probably mispronounce the name. Samira Abu Aganam?
That's close enough. That's closer than most people.
To the Woodburn Commission.
Second.
Proclamation?
Yes.
Yep.
Is there any other?
I think we got the others in the last.
All right. Now, we are on to the... Now we are on to the public portion, which shall be subject to rules established by council and adopted by resolution. You have four minutes. And we have our list. First, we have Mary Ann Foltz. Oh, I'm sorry. There we go.
Mary Ann Foltz, 828 Bloody Run Road, for now. Two topics. First one, the firemen. I just, I'm always fully supportive of anything we can do to address their pay, their time off, their pension system as, because they are probably the least controversial thing you can do ever. I mean, fixing the roads and supporting the firemen is such an easy thing. Everybody's in favor of that. So that's why I continue to say, you know, push for that as much as you can, however you can, try to figure that out. Secondly, I wanted to talk about health, right? I know you guys are going to talk about that tonight. I have to take off here in a second. But I did talk to Laura Jones tonight, so I have some updates on some of the things I was going to say. But I, you know, as I talk to businesses, there's a lot of concern about the folks who have been coming downtown. I know that they're going to be moving up to Scott Avenue and so there's going to be a different environment up there. And I know some things that are going to happen, more security up there, it sounds like potentially even a gate gated area that they're going to continue to do the exchange, the exchange program and try to keep that, you know, a one-to-one exchange. The, oh, and then just anything that we can do, working with them as you're starting to approve this thing tonight, to encourage more foreign people to go to counseling. I mean, there's not, they didn't have a lot of folks that went to counseling, like less than like 1% of the folks, 10 out of 450, you know, things that we can do to increase that because this is the best opportunity we have to get people who are addicted into recovery because they're coming to an organization that is going to have mental health up there. And so I would just say if we can push for that as you're looking at how to, you know, approve their process, I think that would be, that would be huge for everybody, for the individuals as well as for the county and the city. The other, the only last thing that I just wanted to say is, you know, there continues to be a problem. I live on Grafton Road, not that I'm, you know, there's problems everywhere, I realize that, but there are a lot of people walking on Grafton Road at night, 10, 11, midnight, I see them every week, and it's just a very unsafe thing. I don't know if there, if there's any plans to put in sidewalks or, or what you want to do, but I have almost hit people on multiple occasions because they walk right on the edge of the road in the dark at night. And it's, it's just, you know, somebody is going to get hit. I'm hoping that I'm not the one that hits them because certainly I don't want to have that happen to me or to someone else, but it's just very dangerous. And as long as we've got these social services moving out there and more and more people moving up to Scott Avenue, I see more and more people walking along the road, standing in the road. It's just a big, big issue. So thank you very much.
Next, we have Tanner Dalton.
Hello, Tanner Dalton, 24 Turnstone Drive, Morgantown. I am the Morgantown Fire Department Pension Secretary. And I know we've driven this point home pretty significantly in the last meeting, but I wanted to talk a little bit about the perceived pension numbers and perhaps changing the plan. I know that you all have basically explained, have been explained the benefits of switching to the option two. We don't believe that all of the numbers have been provided. I've had continual contact with some members of Bolton. We've had them run some additional numbers, which were not presented in the last week's meeting. We believe that with the ordinance in which you all had set into effect around 2019, that is indeed capable of saving the current pension plan and saving the city a significant amount of money in the long run. Nobody here in 1991 set the current alternative pension plan into place, but we do have an opportunity to fix this plan and benefit your employees paramount. Some of the things that I believe that have not necessarily been explained is by going to the option two, you kind of extend how long you're going to need to fund this plan. We believe that, to steal a line from Larry Hazely, that the life preserver will significantly drop the liabilities in a faster time. The best example I can think of would be if you took a 15-year mortgage opposed to a 30-year mortgage. You end up saving in the long run. There is a portion of those payments that may be somewhat larger, but when you no longer have liabilities, the 107%, which I believe is the city's main concern, and we share that concern, but once you reach liability of zero, you no longer have that 107% payment. The only thing that's required is a continual maintenance payment, which significantly drops down below any of the figures seen. And then once the plan's around 125% funded, according to Blair Taylor from the MPOB, you no longer have a payment at all. The plan is self-sustaining at that point. We believe that is the best option, and why I'm here is to request that we have discussions about this. We would love to, from the fire and police boards, have time to talk to all of you as well as city administration about why we feel this is a benefit. We know by no means we want to bankrupt the city. We want to do what's best for everybody, but we have a vested interest in this a lot more than most people probably would understand. Outside of that, I really appreciate your time this evening, and I hope that we can establish some type of meeting with all of you and really be able to drive home the points that we feel are the most beneficial. So thank you all very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Next, we have Suzanne McDonald.
Hi, I'm Suzanne McDonald. I live at 911 Fairfax Drive, and I'm part of the Evansdale neighborhood. And I'm here to urge you to, not to amend the, the city code, whatever number that is. The neighbors were here, there were several of them last week, and I appreciate you listening to us, but since it's been open both ways, it's just so much better. And we heard after the public portion that there is this plan that's just being pushed so fast. We've thrown together a meeting for tomorrow. It's, it, we kept our standard, you know, you reminded me last week. Oh, yeah, we have that already on the web, so that'll be easier, easiest to just resort to that. But then the engineer and this, so we were informed that they couldn't come at that time. So we've now moved it to 5:30. I don't know if anybody's going to come, but, you know, we would like you to slow down, first of all. Secondly, you know, after our public portion, we heard they're going to put in five feet of sidewalk. Well, you know what? We want WU to build their own sidewalk, you know, on their property. We need the road. This is our road. We would like it to maintain two-way traffic. Thank you.
Next, we have Nicole Panisho.
Panisho. Hi there. My name's Nicole Panisho, representing Evansdale neighborhood as a neighbor. I also am on the neighborhood association. Again, addressing the Raleigh lane, you know, this has been in that condition probably for 40, 50, 60 years. Everybody in that neighborhood, I think there's about 125 households in that neighborhood, I would say 100% of us use that to access Kroger. A lot of times, sometimes we use it, you know, to even get out of the neighborhood when you have game traffic, the dorms moving in, the dorms moving out, you know, the university will close off part of Raleigh, you know, then your access is the light by McDonald's, which lets maybe two cars through at a time, you know, when there's traffic on university. And the traffic over the last two years since after COVID, I don't know what's changed, but there's so much traffic now in Patterson and university. It, there's no rush hour anymore. It's almost all day long. That road is just full, you know, and when you closed off that alleyway, it would take us sometimes 20 minutes to get out of the parking lot at Kroger if that's where we chose to go shopping. And not to mention trying to get into the parking lot. You got Chick-fil-A, which has got, I don't know, at certain times a day, you can see there's just dozens and dozens of cars that are just lying up and going in and out of there, you know, until they prove how the traffic flows on Patterson, it's so hard to come out of Kroger and then get onto university, you know, because it's just backed up, you know, and I don't know if it's between that light on university and Patterson and that light by the PRT, you know, if that could be improved, that would make it so much easier to use Patterson. But right now, our lives are significantly improved since you reopened that alley. And we've all used to giving the right of way and yielding if there happens to be more than one car coming through, which is not that often. You know, and the other thing too is when you talk about pedestrian safety, I feel like the university could step up and do some improvements along their property, you know, even the crossing on, I think it's, it's not Oakland or Evansdale Drive, I think it's a speed hump. The students use it like a crosswalk, but I don't think that's officially a crosswalk. But the university or the city has not put any crosswalks going across the street. There's one crosswalk or two crosswalks on university between the lights, you know, that you've got dorms that have to travel over across the university to go get their meals at the other dorms, you know, so and I just feel like that whole corridor could be improved for pedestrian safety. It's very dark sometimes, especially if it's cold, or I mean, dark and wet, you know. I, that's my biggest fear is when I'm driving up university. So a lot of times, I think a lot of people prefer to cut through the neighborhood just to avoid university. Kudos to what you did, the improvements at the top of Eighth Street. That was phenomenal. That improved so much safety and just people living in the neighborhood, getting in and out of the neighborhood. One last thing too, again, I throw things back on the university. They use our neighborhood to egress in and out of their parking lot, which sits behind the president's house. That's 175 spaces that multiple times a day go in and out of the neighborhood. I mean, I think it would be interesting to know what the traffic count is in our neighborhood when school's in or school's out, but we have to deal with that too. So it's not just 125 households. It's also 175 parking lot that we deal with. Thank you.
Next, we have Annie Carney-Norick.
So much to say, couldn't go fast. Stop me if it's too fast. I tripped over this one on the way through, but as for pensions, it's my understanding Morgantown is a home rule city and we're, if we are, we are prohibited from making any laws governing pensions or retirement plans. I don't know. Sure Ryan's got that figured out, but just thought I'd mention it. I would like to protest. The ordinance amending the solid waste service fees up for so many reasons, partly because they do not consistently perform the services that they promised in the beginning. So every other week I have to call Carol and say, eh, still have my recycling, don't want to bring it back in the house. But also, I've heard a lot of people who've got porch pickups that are only allowed to people who are elderly or infirm, disabled, and can't bring their garbage up to the street where the regular collection is. And so the operator has a designation that this is a porch pickup, and they've been skipping them, which would violate our ordinances and equal protection for people with disabilities. I object strongly on that point. This is personal matter. If they can pick up my stuff just three months consecutively when they're supposed to, I wouldn't mind so much, but this isn't every other week thing that I have to make a phone call. When I call to talk to Republic, it's supposed to be a local phone line. It goes to Memphis, it goes to South Tucson. I was just there last week. I think that means Mexico. It's not a local line, and when you call in, there's nothing they can do to help, and they don't try. When I talked to the Fairmont dispatcher, I was told, well, yeah, you got those new garbage cans that the arm could lift them up and dump in the truck, but we only got one or two trucks with arms, and we don't use those in Morgantown, so I don't know why we had to pay for new garbage bins. And I'm sure this rolled in somewhere, but I doubt that that was given to us out of the kindness of the heart of Republic. So for that and other reasons, I object to that change. On the search committee for the new city manager, when one, at first glance, it looks like it's going to be $35,800. But if you add up all of the things that have come along afterward, interviews and intermediaries, and if you want extra candidates, it's closer to $85,000. And just a little more transparency on the price would be a great idea. And then on one-way streets. It's, what's written in the ordinance is, I think, meant to be an exhaustive list of the one-way streets in Morgantown. And as it skips one and Seventh and Fourth Ward, that's not listed, and it is definitely a one-way street. But I would also ask that if you change the ordinance, that you add verbiage to the effect of "and streets" as designated by signage, in case we forgot any others. So it's not on the list. It wasn't illegal. It's going the right way. I only went one way. 26 seconds or something else. Yeah, I can't read my writing. So I suppose that'll do for now. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Dave Beaufort.
Merry Christmas. Good to see everyone. I'm here about the trash and the, I've been doing a little research, and this is for the public. I have been in a lawsuit with Republic. They sued us. We banned them from our property, banned them everywhere for taking advantage of us. Now, you all bid things out, the city engineer bids things out. You got, you got a lawyer here that's a good negotiator. He's negotiated with my attorney many times. He can do it. We're getting taken advantage of here. We could save $19 a ton over, what they're doing, they're jacking up the Morgantown Industrial Park Transfer Station. Mountain State Wastes has taken over all our contracts, and that's Bridgeport, Fairmont, Morgantown, Washington, PA, Waynesburg, PA, Berkeley County, West Virginia, in and out of the city limits. WVU has switched to them. It doesn't affect me, but I just don't like to see anybody taken advantage of. You know, capitalism is one thing. Maybe they're losing 250,000. Maybe they're losing more, you know? When we start a project, we don't make money the first day. You lose for a year or two, you know, till you lease up, till you finish building out. You know, a lot of interest to pay, and you all know what you're doing when you put things out for bid. Damien just doesn't go out and, you know, buy something, you know, he gets a couple of prices. You all bid out, you know, whatever, snow, when you remodeled this building, you didn't just call up a construction company and tell them to come in here. You owe it to the public, you really do, to our citizens, because this company is a dangerous company. Don't be afraid they're going to leave. I mean, I was in an hour and a half meeting today with the elevator company, Schindler Elevator, because we've been with them a long time, but I told them we weren't happy. They brought three people in. We have a lot of elevators with them all over the place, and we're building, we're building with elevators. And I said, look, your prices are, but we gave you a special rate. We gave you the rate we give UPTC in Pittsburgh. So they got more elevators than me. Well, we want, we want to keep you here. We need you here. You're, you don't need me here. But they really have a monopoly on it. I said, look, I don't want to leave you. Your people are good service people, but you got to take care of us. I just didn't accept the price. Well, let us go back and work on the price. I said, well, you did already. Now you're back. My point is, it's just a little bit of negotiation can save our community money. I really am, you know, I'm back downtown because, you know, Jenny asked me to come in here. We debated, we're thrilled, the houses are coming down, you all are working with us great, and we got a lot of plans. I mean, we've had a hotel company ready to go, right in the point there. It's going to be good. Leave it to Ryan to go negotiate. Let him, you don't, you know, you've got enough to do. We all have enough to, I don't need to be down here tonight. My prices are great. I I cut my apartments in commercial about 30%, and where they came after me in federal court, they're not going to win, they're going to lose. Mark's going to crush them. They're not allowed on my property. Their trucks are filthy dirty. You know, it's not like Sheetz where they have beautiful, clean trucks. I don't expect that. It's a dirty business. I mean, I mean, the trash business. But they can wash their trucks, they can spew and, you know, hydraulic all over the place, ramming walls, breaking stuff. I've got pictures of trash in and out of the city limits all over the place. I was down here complaining a while back with Emily about trash. I just want to see it clean. You go into my developments, they're not perfect, I don't think, but we have people walking around daily around dumpster sites. And the properties around our properties that we kind of control, like Suncrest Town Center, from the Hilton Garden, all the way over to the office buildings that are all out parcels, we do not own. There is a, like you all have an ordinance, we have an REA that tells everybody what they have to do. And when there's a dumpster, you know, trash blowing out of it, when, you know, when the gate's not closing, you know, when a huge national franchise has rats and bugs coming out and crossing, you know, we got on them and took care of it. But thank you all very much. Really think about this. We will give you free consulting, literally. We will help with you negotiate. They're not going anywhere. And Mountain State will come in and take this over, because we're going to do it in Fairmont and Bridgeport. I just want everything kept clean. It's our community, it's all of our community. Thank you all.
And that is the end of our list. Is there anybody else wishing to speak at this time? Once, twice? All right. That closes the public portion. Up first, we have the discussion of the Bolton Actuarial Study of Pension Plans. And then our own, John is here to tell us about it? Yeah. Come on up, tell us about it, and then we'll go from there.
Excellent. Somebody forgot their phone. Is it yours?
Dave, without his phone, it'd be something to contemplate.
Good evening. John Ferguson, Finance Director, City of Morgantown. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight, and I really, really appreciate what you're taking up here tonight, what the discussion's about. It's about the fire and police pension funding. Trying to make sure, I shouldn't say trying, to make sure that we are securing the overall benefits. Making sure that we can pay for those benefits that are heroes. We have a nice representation here from the Fire Department. I was really hoping that the Police Department would be here also. These aren't our enemies. These are our heroes. These are the guys that are out there daily. I shouldn't say guys, not all of them are guys. These are the individuals that are out there making sure that we're safe, making sure we're secure. We need to do our part, I need to do my part as the Finance Director to make sure that we are fully funding, or eventually getting to be fully funded, their pension plan. I don't want to make, I don't want to leave their pension plan so that, you know, in a couple of years, you know, we're talking about, are we in solvent or in a very bad position? I don't want to leave it like that. I'm not that type of person. I have too much respect for these individuals to make sure that they get what they've been promised, to get what they've earned. We have retirees, the heroes that were here, that have served, that they've earned it. We need to make sure that we fund it. And we all agree with that. I mean, city managers, I shouldn't say city managers, city manager, Assistant City Manager, myself as Finance Director, my predecessors. We all agree with that. We agree with these guys too. That's our number one concern, making sure that we can actually pay for what was promised, what they've earned. My particular job on top of that is making sure that, yes, the city can pay for it. So that's my biggest concern. I don't have a pre-palience speech, I don't have a pre-planned presentation. I actually want to answer the questions that you have. So I'm here tonight, whatever you got, if you want to ask questions that maybe other people have had, I wasn't here at the last meeting I do. I was on vacation, I apologize. Timing, yes, was not great. But I'm here for you tonight. Whatever you have, go ahead and ask me.
Motion.
I guess we're, I don't, because we're looking to...
We need to move it to an agenda, right?
Well, this is our discussion.
Think of it like a committee of the whole. It's just open for discussion. At the end, want to move it to a future agenda or not? That is, as council's prerogative.
Okay. I apologize.
That's okay.
It's a good question.
You might address some of the earlier comments that we had received that the Pension Board was disappointed in the amount of money that could have been made, that they thought was not made, and what the rationale was for the way we handled the money.
Absolutely. And to be completely honest with you, and Ryan might get upset with what I'm about to say, I am disappointed as well. Now, it's my understanding that this money was set aside when it was initially, when the sales tax did come. Now, remember, you have two different ordinances. The first ordinance was July, oh, wait, July 2019? Is that correct? The second ordinance was September 2022? Each one of those ordinances was worded a little bit differently. The first one was set as, was the way it's worded, the way that it was passed. It could be interpreted that not only is it for solely police and fire, but also for the civilian employees within that department? At least that's my understanding, my, and remember, I'm not a lawyer. I'm Finance Director, not, I don't have a license to practice law. But when I read it, the way it sounds to me, this could actually be shared with not only the police pension, the fire pension, but also the city's employees or the civilian pension. So there was no specific designation in there, but yet it was deposited, those funds were deposited into a separate account that was not mixed with the general fund. Okay? These were not commingled at all. These were deposited into a separate account, which has been distributed to you. It was a checking account. The reason why it was deposited into a checking account, because it was originally intended to be there for a very relatively short amount of time. It was deposited into this type of account because it was anticipated that there would be direction from council. And I wasn't here back then, I can't tell you the exact history of why or when, but it was anticipated that this would be a short-term period, and then it would be dispersed as it was instructed by council. Okay? Now, four and a half years later, almost five years later, this money has been sitting in that type of account, okay? About four months back, now I've been here over four months, almost four months? Trying to remember exactly when I started. But anyways, to make a long story short, these are now in what's called a money market account. They are earning more than 3% interest. What that means is that they are currently, I'm not talking about what they were earning, I'm talking about what they are currently earning more than three times what they are, or what they were earning prior to the change in the type of account in which they are in. Okay? That does sound good, but that doesn't make up for the fact that they were sitting in an interest-bearing checking account earning approximately 1.2%. That's where I personally agree with both the fire and the pension, where, yeah, that money should have been utilized so that there was a possible increase in return on investment. What does that really mean? I actually have the numbers for you. I ran it, it's very easy to do, because I know exactly what each of their accounts had for a return on investment each year. I broke it down by quarter, because we receive the sales tax by quarter. If I add it up, and this is compounded, if I add it up, as of the last quarter, we didn't lose, okay? We didn't lose money. I don't want you thinking that there was money lost. But we lost the opportunity to make an additional $500,000. Okay? It wasn't millions of dollars. Okay? The reason why is because the returns are not exactly static. It's not a specific straight dollar amount or percentage that they earn every year. Some years were a little higher. There was a year where they lost over 15%, okay? That was all taken into consideration. Now, that does sound like a large dollar amount, but, okay? And this is where the but comes in. If you take a look at what the change in the overall liability, the increase in the unfunded liability for both pension accounts, it is a fraction of what that change in the liability was compared to what that potential investment income could have been. Would it have saved the plan? Would it have made it better? It would have made it a little, little better. Would it have decreased the overall negative impact at the increase of that liability? I'm not trying to sound like a contra-negative here. The liability was this much after a one-year period, it grew to this much. If the sales tax was divided and actually deposited into the account instead of being this much, it would have been this much. Okay? You see how small my hands moved? Okay? It's not as significant of an impact as originally imagined. How's that? Does that make sense? It would have made, it would have made a difference, yes. Would have made such an impact where we would have seen a significant change in our unfunded liability, how much that the city actually owes to cover how much of that benefit is calculated to cost us? The answer's no. Does that make sense? So the money was held with the intentions of it being in a checking account, short-term, which is why it was used or was deposited into that type of account. And I'm not trying to talk bad about my predecessors. They did exactly what I would have done under the exact same circumstances. I would have assumed that, yes, that money would have been put to where it was supposed to. Unfortunately, they were waiting, just as I'm waiting. We need the direction, we need your direction on exactly how this is going to work. Because if you take a look at what we are currently doing, if we change absolutely nothing, continue doing exactly what we're doing, this plan will be, I'm not going to use a harsh word, try to make, try to scare people, but it's, it doesn't work. We all know that. Not only city management, not only the Finance Director, the people that are receiving, that are earning those benefits, the fire, the police, current retirees, the people who are currently working. We all know what we are currently doing does not work. We need to do something different. That's what it really comes down to. The direction of that something different, that's really up to your decision. That's why we hired the actuary. That's their job, that's what they do. We take what they gave us. I'm not an actuary. It is a type of accounting, you know, it's kind of a very, very specific, specialized area of accounting. That's not me. I can look at what they produce, and I can tell you, and it's very complicated, I can tell you what the results are, but I'm not the one who's going to sit there and calculate it for you. That's their job. I can see what they produce, and I can interpret those results and say that, you know, if we do one way, it does work. If we go a different direction, it does work. The real difference is, can we afford those payments? That's the real difference. When you take a look at the charts, don't worry about, well, is the difference going to be, well, hypothetically, if we earn 7.5%, or hypothetically, we earn 5.5%, or hypothetically, we earn 20% per year. Reality is, we can't guarantee any result per year. They've actually lost money some years. They've made more money other years. It is not a fixed rate. No one can predict exactly what's going to happen. Okay? My concern is, can we afford those payments based on the information provided to us by the experts? There is one method that does work, okay? It does get us to that fully funded 100% status. It does take a little longer than it does if we fund it with crazy amount of money per year. I need to make sure that we can afford those payments, because if we take one direction and we have to make a larger, significantly larger payment per year, that's going to have to draw money from somewhere else in the city. I don't want to take money away from Bow Park, okay? I don't want to take money away from the Trail, Mon Trail system. I don't want to take money away from police equipment. I don't want to take money away from fire equipment. I want to make sure that we can still continue to afford the payments and also maintain the level of service, maintain the level of financing that all the other departments are currently receiving. And there is one way to do that, we pointed it out. Based off from the experts' calculations, those were not mine. If it went another way, I would be sitting here telling you, hey, listen, the other way works better, or this way works better. I'm telling you that there is a method, okay? And you can see it, and we can run different rates, and I'll show you, but we keep getting the same exact results. There is one method where we can not only make sure that we are going to be fully funded, but we can also afford those payments without having to cut services, without having to take money away from Bow Park, take money away from, let's say, the city's dilapidated fund or dilapidated building fund, without taking money away from all of the other critical projects that we have in capital escrow. I want to make sure we still do that, and we can afford this. That's my job, and that's why I'm here tonight. Does that make sense? And I know it's not a great decision to make. It's not a popular decision to make, but we respect our retirees enough to make sure that, yes, we do make sure that their benefit is going to be fully funded. We respect our taxpayers enough to make sure that, yes, they're going to get the services which they currently receive. We don't want to take anything away from them. And we also don't want to raise our taxes by 100 or 300% just to make sure that we can fund a much larger payment while also continuing to do the exact same level of services which they're getting. We want to find that happy medium where we can continue to have the same amount of services, if you will, the same amount of support for Bow Park, the same amount of support for the Trail system, the same amount of support for our capital escrow, our capital projects. We want to maintain where we are. We don't want to decrease that. If possible, we would like to do more for our community. But yet, we also need to make sure that we can fund this pension system, that unfunded portion, which means that we have, we have a liability. We owe that.
So pardon, which is the plan that works the best?
The one that worked the best, and I know it's not the popular one. I know it's not the one that everyone, that both parties agree to. But yet, to me, it's not us versus them. It's the one that works, and that's the one where you do switch to optional two immediately. And we can run all sorts of different scenarios. We can run the scenarios where we do get a higher rate of return. We can run a scenario where one does better than the other. But yet, we can't guarantee a rate. But when you take a look at all of those different scenarios, you do see a trend where one does work better than the other. And I'm not, I'm not trying to knock...
Yeah. So how, for how long has that option two immediately been available to us?
Option two was available to us in 2023. I don't have the exact month.
So that was an improvement by the legislature to try to coax the few of us that are left that haven't done something in 2023?
And it was over a 40-year period with a fixed date, not a variable date. That 40 years doesn't start when we decide. That 40-year period was a hard date set when they passed the law that says as of 2040, no, 2050, 2020, 2063.
Is there any penalty for prepayment?
I don't believe so.
We had some windfall at some point, or some ability to pay more?
I don't believe there is. We need to make sure we make them...
Similar to when we have a shortened, when we were talking about having a shortened, how when you have a shortened mortgage, that it would be to our benefit. But for right now, we're struggling, we have not managed to switch over to this 40-year plan, or a 30-year plan. We have not managed to switch over to a new plan, even though we knew we needed to for 20 years or more. So here we are. We have a severely underfunded pension system for police and fire department. The reason why we're not looking at funds for anyone else is because that's the severely underfunded, those are the severely underfunded plans, and we care about our police and our firefighters. So we're looking at paying those pensions, paying them in full, not changing our liability on those pensions, and then also... liability on those pensions, and then also setting up new hires, only new hires with a state plan so that we're not adding to our difficulties, our liabilities. Because that has been the, the suggestion under this, this option two. So it seems like at the time when we were putting the sales tax in, we didn't have a clear way out. We didn't have actuarial numbers. We didn't have this option to immediate plan that became available in 2023. And right now, at this moment, we have the actuarial numbers. We have the accumulated funds to handle this issue from the sales tax. We have this option two available to go into it immediately from 2023. Right now in 2024, we have our moment that we can take care of these pension plans so that they are solvent in what year? 40 years from now?
Yes.
Yes. So this is a, this is, people call a sticky problem, a problem that does not have a good solution. But here we are, we have a solution and I think this is a good, a good time for us if we are willing to take that plan.
If you're planning any of your recommendations?
Yes, sir.
Those that are on our city plan, I just want to make sure they will not be affected. They will be, their pension will be as they were promised the day they started.
Yes, sir. As a matter of fact, there, the overall pension plan will be in a better financial position if we switch to this plan because we will have to be required to make a much higher amount of required minimum payment every year. Right now, we are only making the required minimum payment, which is 107% of what we made last year, which is significantly less than what it really should be if we want to make it to fully funded. Put it in perspective, and I shared with these numbers with you before, our overall unfunded liabilities. Everybody's seen these. These are on our website. Okay? This isn't anything that anyone's hiding. Okay? We're totally open here. I know there's, I know there's trust issues with the finance department. We, we're trying to be completely open, honest, available.
I don't think there's trust issues with the finance department.
I was kidding. I'm sorry.
I've never seen any trust issues with the finance. If someone wants to come up with some, they certainly can, but I don't think at this moment there are trust issues with the finance department.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you. So if we take a look here, just as an example, our total unfunded liability, now remember, this is on a two-year lag. So even though it's dated for, it was dated for the fiscal year, June 30th, 2025, it was actually done two years prior. That's just how the actuaries do it. Okay? It's based off the numbers from two years ago and they projected out to the end of this fiscal year, the unfunded liability, and this is just for the police. We're just talking one of them. How much do we owe? $67.8 million. That's the unfunded portion, unfunded, 67.8 million.
And the percentage?
What's that? The funded percentage is 21.25%, which means the unfunded percentage would be 78.75%. Okay? I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but I believe social security is actually funded better than this. It's, I probably shouldn't say that on the mic.
No, I think so.
If we take a look now, remember, this is right here, this is just police. 68 million. Let's take a look at fire. Fire. $50.2 million unfunded. We add those together, we are talking 100 and, let's just say, $118 million unfunded. That's our liability. We're talking, we're not talking small dollar amount here. We're talking a pretty large dollar amount. And if we're looking to fund this over the next 40 years, actually, it's not even 40 years, it's 40 years less three, two, two years. We are talking about a significant increase in how much we are contributing to this. We're not talking small dollars. But the reality is, we need to do something different than what we're doing now. Does that make sense? So.
What's the percentage there?
Percentage on the fire, they are funded 23.81%, which means they are unfunded by 70, would that be 76.19%? You guys can fact check my math in my head. It's unfunded by a lot. Let's just leave it at that.
So you and I can commiserate on a couple of things, John. This is a problem that we inherited and we wish things had been done differently in the past, but we can't go back and change how they were done five years ago anymore than we can change how they were done 30 years ago. When the sales tax was passed by council, I was not on council, and I did speak at that time and asked for them to codify those percentages, which they chose not to do. We have since gone back and done that. And I guess some of it is probably my fault because it's questions that I didn't know to ask. I made some assumptions, like up until several months ago, I had no idea that, you know, that money was sitting in an account. I didn't know to ask. You know, it's not something exciting like when, when the ex-mayor came to me and said, I think you should consider running for my seat for council. He didn't say, it'll be so great. Our pensions are 25% funded. So this is definitely an issue that we need to take up because I hope someone takes my seat someday, someday sooner rather than later, and I don't want to have to say that to them when they're, when they're getting ready to run. We heard from a pension board member tonight. They asked for a meeting, which I'm more than happy to do. I will never turn down a request to talk with staff about anything, so I don't know how anyone else feels about that. But that being said, it's my understanding that you and at least some of administration had already met with pension boards.
Yes, ma'am.
So when they come and they say, you're not being given all of the numbers, what is your assumption that they are referring to that we are not being told? I've, I've seen a lot of numbers.
Yes. So I believe, and I may be corrected later, I believe what they're talking about is what does the city currently have in that separate account, which is the allocation of municipal sales tax? Now, remember, they are allocated 25%. We have two different ordinances. We have two different accounts now. Okay? Ryan shared with you, please don't distribute those publicly, not because we're hiding anything, but because they include bank statements. I don't want the actual bank statements or our account numbers to be distributed because, well, there's a lot of bank fraud going on. Please, and that's the only reason why I'm asking you to do that. You can share that cover page if Ryan lets you. That's not my decision. But you can see right there, as a matter of fact, can I borrow that, Ryan? Because I didn't hear anything else earlier. So, I'm on the first page, the first part. Okay? If you see right there, if I had a lot more time, I would make it look a lot prettier. I apologize. You can see right here, we have, starting from day one, okay? How much are gross total combined, sales, municipal sales tax, that additional 1%? How much the city collected? And I have it all the way through to today. Okay? Our last payment, you can see, was actually in October 25th, 2024. That includes that. And then if you take a look at the next column to the right, this is 25% of that. That's how much was the allocation. Okay? Now, remember, the way that the actual ordinance was worded, it's worded to help fund the unfunded pension liability. Okay? With the intentions, okay, of helping the city meet the annual required minimum distributions or contributions, I say, not distributions. So that's to help the city to afford those payments. Okay? Now.
And get matching money, right?
Correct. Yep. Because if we make that required minimum contribution, the state will actually kick in a portion of what they collect from that foreign fire insurance premium, okay, which, and I'm going from memory, so don't quote me, we're talking about approximately $600,000 for the police and approximately $580,000 a year for the fire. Please don't quote me on that. I can give you exact numbers. I'm going from memory. But yeah, in order for us, I shouldn't say for us, for the pensions to receive the state's contribution, if you will, that, that share of that surcharge, surtax for foreign insurance, we gotta, the city needs to make sure that we are funding the minimum amount, which we've been doing and they've been receiving. Okay? There's absolutely no problems with that. If we do go to option two, that means that our required minimum contribution does significantly increase. We need to make sure that, yes, we are still funding that required minimum, even though it's higher, in order for both pensions to receive that additional state contribution from that surtax, surcharge. Does that make sense? So we're still going to want to make sure that we meet those higher required minimum contributions because we don't want to leave that money sitting aside. That money was collected by the state for a reason and we would like to make sure that, yes, the city of Morgantown, both the, the fire pension and the police pension do get their share of what was collected by the state. So I forgot where we were going with that conversation. Oh, but anyways.
The numbers that we aren't being told.
Yep. So, so the numbers that you're not being told. So if you take a look, what was actually collected since our very first payment, which was received in October 2020? Just because the law went into effect on May 23rd, 2019, doesn't mean we started immediately receiving those funds from the state. That actually, our first payment, and I verified it, everyone can verify it, you go onto the state website, it's WV Oasis. You can see right there, our first payment was received in October 2020.
And if I can just jump right in, that is because the sales tax, the actual 1% sales tax did not go into effect until July 1 of 2020 and everything is a quarter behind. So July to October, that is why our first payment was in October 2020, even though the initial ordinance was passed in, or the home role approval was in 2019. But the ordinance changing that made it effective July 1st, 2020.
The exact dollar amount that we have collected, that 25%, not the total gross, but the 25% of the actual we collected was $9.8 million. What is in those two money market accounts currently? That's what the, everyone thinks is a big secret. It's not a secret. We just didn't want to share our actual bank statements because we're more worried about bank fraud. That is a real legitimate concern in my office, for real. What is the actual balance? As of today, it's $10,127,537.86. Have we earned interest on it? Yes, we have. Now, for the first four years, well, since our first payment to four months ago, it was at a small rate. In the past four months, it's been three times what we have been receiving, over 300% of that interest rate. We have tried to make steps or take at least what we could, given the city's short-term investment policy. We're trying to maximize that return to try to address the issues. That's not a secret either. That is a real concern even for me. We need to make sure that, yes, we are maximizing our return on investment on that money because it could have been invested in some other method, some other type of investment and potentially earned approximately $500,000 more. But would that have decreased $110 million unfunded liability? No. Would have it made a little, small, small dent in it? Yes. Are we going to now use it? I want to say yes. I'm hoping you guys are going to make a decision. Doesn't have to be tonight, but when you do, yes, we definitely want to use that money that is going to help us to make those higher annual contributions. As a matter of fact, this really is a saving grace that will allow us to afford those payments. It truly is the saving grace for the city. And I'm not talking about, you know, just these, the, the two pension funds. I'm talking about the city as a whole because that means that we can utilize these funds to help offset the additional cost and also help make sure that we don't have to pull money from other entities or other programs or other areas that the city currently utilizes public funds for, for the service of the public. And that's really where it comes down to. Yeah, that option two, no matter which way you slice it, really does, we can afford that. Does that make sense?
John, could you speak to the increased minimum we would need to pay under option two, sort of as a, just in general terms, a percent of the overall city budget?
Okay.
And your comfort with that? And then if we don't do option two, at what point, what we need to fund into this unfunded liability becomes a much greater percent that impacts service and staffing?
Yes, I can. So what I want you to realize right now is that currently, our current contributions for both pensions, one is approximately $1.1 million per year. The other one is approximately $1.5 million. Please don't quote me on those exact dollar amounts because I'm going from memory. Okay? Just know that we are between $1 to $1.5 million per year per pension plan. Okay? By going to option two, we are going to significantly jump from approximately $1 to $1.5 to $3, to $3.5 million per year. Okay? We are going to increase our required minimum contribution by three times. Well, two times. Yeah. Compounded. So yeah, that's a significant jump. Now, the question is, if we were to continue doing the same, when would it become, when would we really start to, to feel the squeeze where we can no longer afford that? That was presented by Bolton. There's an inflection point of approximately 2035 where, you know, you really are splitting hairs between, you know, what if we continue doing it one way or another way, or which interest rate looks better? Reality is, the interest rate or the return on investments are going to be what they are and we can't predict what they are. But at 2035, that's that inflection point where all of a sudden, they're, they're relatively close when you look at that, but then all of a sudden, you can see one of the methods exponentially take off to where you are now talking $6 million instead of just the $3 million in one year, $7 million the next year, $8 million the following year, $9 million the year after. And we're not talking about just, just, you know, what happens, you know, 10, 15 years from now, because this is, what would happen 10, 15 years from now? We could not afford those payments. So I would rather have a steady $3 million, which is more predictable than have that increase per year, because even 15 years from now, we would not be able to sustain that large of a jump from year to year and have it compounded the following year and then again, and then again. And the reason why is because we're talking about pensions. We're talking about people who have earned that benefit. We're talking about people that are getting older and we need to make sure that that is being funded. The longer we go, okay, without stopping new entrance into that plan, the larger and larger our liability becomes. We're not talking about, you know, just the growth in the investment accounts. The growth in the investment accounts will be what they will be. But if we don't stop new entrance coming into the plan, into this current plan, that liability will continue to become bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger. Does that make sense? Whereas if the new entrance now go into the state plan, we contribute, we contribute a percentage of the gross wage and any liability over and beyond that amount, that's actually up to the state. Correct?
I just, thank you. It's almost overwhelming, the, the amount of information we have on this. Let me express from my own personal point of view, this has been, pension fund has been a problem and was quickly identified long before I came on council. And we've been working as council for a solution for the longest time, which is one of the reasons why we went after home role, which is one of the reasons why we put into the sales tax into being, which is one of the reasons why we took a portion of that sales tax and moved it to, to go after that. It seemed as though the convergence of opportunities did not actually coalesce until we finally got the option to offer to us, combined with everything that we had done in the past to prepare to deal with this problem, which we were perfectly well aware of. And we took precautions. And we took precautions, and some of them not as beneficial as they might've been, but we parked the money that we had in a secure place where we knew it would not be suffering fluctuations of a market, that had not been particularly advantageous for us in the past in reducing our benefits. It seems to me, and we've experienced this in numbers of things, Richmont, the development there, things happen, come together unexpectedly, things that we've received, that we see in other activities down on Lower Greenmont, where we have monies available to us that we weren't counting on to deal with abandoned properties, that we can advocate for these kinds of activities that we know that are beneficial, that we move. So, it's a matter of timing, it's a matter of when things happen, when things are appropriate to act upon. It seems to me that we have that particular time now with this. Now, would I like to simply just erase the problem completely? Yes. Will that happen? No. Are there any guarantees if we did it any other way?
No.
We haven't seen anything that's all that convincing. This at least gives us a timeline that we can deal with and keep the city functioning, providing all the other activities, while ensuring that we are meeting our responsibilities to our police and to our park. I don't know what else to say on this. I mean, we could throw more numbers at it, and we can argue back and forth, you should've done this, you didn't do that. This is what we have now. We'll decide on that, with all the information you've thrown at us, as to whether or not that's an appropriate way to proceed. Personally, I think, I think finally we have a light at the end of the tunnel, and I'd like to proceed in that direction.
I agree with everything you said.
So, if I understand the argument that's been made to us about what should be done with the sales tax correctly, it's that the request is that those funds immediately be released to the current pension program.
Yes. If that happens.
So, yeah, I wanted you to run through, like, what that would look like.
Yep.
And, but also, before you do that, I just wanted to say that, I think before we take this up on an agenda, we should have a meeting with the fire and the police, you know, whoever wants to meet with us and discuss this. I think that's only fair to do, it is their pension, and it's also something that cannot hurt. So, I would appreciate if we did that. But go ahead, sorry.
No, I agree with everything you said. The more information that you're presented with, the better. To be quite honest with you, I wanna make sure that you are making an informed decision, have enough information to make sure that the decision that is made is based off from the most accurate information that you can receive. And if you have questions, ask them. This, I know it's not a popular decision to make, but it's something that really needs to be made, at least from a financial perspective, I'm the finance director. Please. But yes, sir. Your question was, if we were to deposit how much we have currently in our money market account, which has been set aside, that was collected for that sales tax, what would happen if we deposited into the investment accounts now? What would that look like? Okay? Well, that would look like we no longer have that resource to help offset that higher amount of minimum required contribution, okay? That will not really help offset the overall general liability that we have. Remember, we are talking about a liability of $118 million compared to $10 million, okay? If we were to dump that $10 million, split it half, one goes to fire, one goes to pension, and they were to invest that, how much of an impact would that have on our unfunded liability? Well, the answer is none, because our unfunded liability actually on ours, from everything we present, it's already been taken into consideration, because that money is set aside specifically to help fund that, okay? So, does that mean all of a sudden now that that liability shrinks? Well, no, it's the same liability, okay? It just so happens to be that that money, instead of being in that money market account, is sitting in an investment account. So, it does have the potential, potential, okay, not guaranteed, potential to earn more money than if it was sitting in a money market account. But that doesn't mean that it also doesn't have the potential of losing money, okay? We always gotta protect the downside. We can't always look at the upside. It's not always sunny and 80 degrees out, you know? Sometimes it's 20 degrees and snowing, okay? Does that make sense? What's the downside of that? So, let's say, as an example, like you asked, we dumped the money into their, I shouldn't say, we transfer the money into their accounts, I'm not dumping it, transfer it. Then what does that look like? That looks like now, we need to come up with an additional $2 million per year, per plan, and we gotta figure out what gets cut. That's the reality, okay? So, we need to come up with approximately $2 million per year, per plan, $4 million total. Where are we coming up with that money? Well, we are taught, we have talked about increasing our municipal fire fee, but it's not $4 million a year, okay? That would be an increase of, what, 120%? That's crazy. We, I don't, you couldn't even pass that increase of a percentage. Where are we gonna come up with that money? The reality is, we would have to start cutting services, okay? We would actually have to start cutting how much is going into our much-needed capital projects. We don't do capital projects that are not needed. These are, like legitimately, there's a real specific need. We make sure that we are utilizing the public funds to the best of our ability, but yet, if those funds absolutely have to be used towards our pension, which we've already promised them, they've already earned it, that money's coming from somewhere, it's $4 million? Well, $4 million, that actually probably low, I shouldn't say the low-hanging fruit, but right off the top, you're talking about cutting Bow Park off completely. We're talking about cutting, and I'm not pointing them out, I'm also the impromptu finance director for them. Absolutely love them, don't get me wrong.
Not impromptu, it's in bylaws and city code that you're our treasurer.
Wonderful organization. But the reality is, is that we will have to make some real significant, hard decisions. What gets cut? That's what we're really talking about, up to $2 and $4 million per year. What's that percentage of our budget? So, let's talk about general fund. General fund, I don't have the exact number, but we're talking between 50 and 60 million dollars per year. So, what is $4 million over, let's just say, $50 million? Well, that would be, would that be, is that even 20%? That's not 20%. I'm trying to do math in my head, it's too late, I haven't had dinner yet.
40 million to 4 is 10.
There you go. So, let's just say, round number, 10% of our budget, just as an example, don't quote me. 10% of our budget, that's a lot of money. 10% of what we currently have, what we're obligated, we have obligated, that's, we're talking a chunk of money. That's what we're really talking about. And that's not just a one time, that's per year, every year for the next almost 40 years. And I don't take that lightly, and I'm not trying to make a spectacle of that, that I would not wanna be in that position, I would not wanna be the finance director at that time to have to say that to, you know, all of our departments, to say, you know what, we have to make a 10% haircut off everything, or we have to carve out at least that exact same dollar amount out of some of these other programs that a lot of people find extremely valuable and hold in a very high regard for our city. So, I would rather not personally be in that position to have to tell people that. I mean, I guess the better question is, and I'm not trying to, trying to call you out or anything, but I don't think you would either. Right? Am I wrong?
Sure. One of the things I have a question about then, though, is if you're talking $2 million a year, is that what you were, and there's $10 million in here, so we're talking five years. So, what happens when that, when that five years is over?
Okay, so, we actually, the projections that I shared with you a couple weeks ago, it was a combination of an increase in fire fee, it was a combination of that plus what was in the $10 million, and remember, that's now earning 3% to 3.5% interest. I would like to explore other options, but that's a conversation at a different time, something that is safe, that we could potentially earn, at least what we are earning now and higher, but it's a combination of a couple different revenue streams that will fund that. But the cornerstone of that, the saving grace of it, is that sales tax account. That's what really, and you said it before, the circumstances, everything seems to align right now, we really do, and maybe it's by mistake, maybe it was actual, someone knew something and there was a very specific reason why, and it's now today, why that money was set aside. It was gonna help us now, it will actually make this plan work.
That was intentional.
I'm sorry.
That was intentional.
I'm sorry.
To have those funds available.
Oh, yes, ma'am, I thought.
And it's wonderful now that we have the actuarial information that you all gathered.
Yes.
And it's intentional now that the legislature further refined our options, that then there was an option that worked for us. Because otherwise, those numbers just keep getting bigger, and that's not good for a city.
That's correct. And this isn't anything that's unique to Morgantown. This is not anything that's unique to the Morgantown Fire Pension Board, it's not anything that's unique to the Morgantown Police Pension Board. This is practically statewide. All of our neighboring municipalities had the exact same decision, which you folks are now here to make, and they also decided to go with option two. They also, and I'm not talking about one or two municipalities, I'm talking, this is all, again, just public information, you can go on either their website or onto the MPOB's website, you can see for yourself. All of our neighboring municipalities have actually gone to that, and it really had, they have not seen a significant hit because of that when it comes to recruiting, okay? And I'm not saying that we won't experience something opposite, I'm just, I look at what they did and how they responded and what their results were. This is not unique to Morgantown, we just happen to be one of the last, the last set of municipalities to actually move to the, to the option two.
So, a route would be having a meeting with the police and fire pensions, having this item on a future agenda, including an increase in the fire fee and this option two. That would be kind of a package that we could put together, would be a meeting, and then putting these items on the agenda for a vote.
If I could interject, I did speak with one of the members from one of the pension boards, and actually talked to Ryan about that earlier today, about having a meeting, because they had reached out to me, and I said that after our meeting today, I was gonna talk to everyone about it. So, I would second or encourage the idea of agreeing to move it to a future agenda, not necessarily, unless we're able to have the meeting.
That's what I was gonna suggest.
Once we have the meeting.
Yeah, move it to an agenda contingent on us having the meeting.
Yeah, so, that was what I would encourage.
So, you were sending out good vibes, because everybody was thinking the same thing.
Yeah, I agree.
Consensus, then move it to a future agenda based on the meeting?
Yep.
Good.
I guess acclamation.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
John, great job.
Thank you.
I give you a lot of credit. That was, that was a lot.
This is extremely complicated, and it's very hard for me to try to explain it, so I appreciate the time and opportunity.
Thank you for becoming an expert in such a short, you've only been with us for a few months, and you apparently spent most of your time working on this.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
All right, next we have the consideration of approval of an ordinance amending Section 105.42, compensation of election officials and other expenses. I look to you, Ms. Wade.
Yes, Mayor, so, the ordinance that is before you outlines a lot of the expenses that we, that we experienced during the election process for our poll workers. As you know, poll workers are essential to our election process, and we have struggled the last two elections to recruit and retain poll workers. So, our solution was to look at our, what we're paying them, the compensation, and so we reached out to the county clerk, Carrie Blaney, and these numbers that are before you are aligned with what the county pays their poll workers. So, we felt that that would be a good solution to help in recruiting and retaining our poll workers. We all want to have a smooth transition or smooth election process on election day and during early voting, and we need the, we need our poll workers. We do have, as a reminder, we have nine precincts, and we are required to have four poll workers at each precinct, so that's 36 poll workers, and we have 15 alternates, so that's quite a, quite a lot of folks. And through the last few elections, we have folks who have been with the city in their municipal elections for many years, and they take great pride in what they do, and so this is our solution to try to keep those good folks.
Move to approve.
You wanna meet me?
Yep, you go.
Discussion.
Dave, you had talked about early voting last time. What was, I know you had said something about it was $15 an hour, did we need to add that into those ordinance, eh?
Yes, so, Councilor Hershberger asked what the provision was for payment of workers at early voting locations. The clerk's office did confirm that it was a practice to pay $16 per hour for that work. It was not in the existing code, so we updated the ordinance for the packet to include a line making that amendment. It looks like that updated packet was not published, or that updated ordinance was not included in the packet, but the ordinance before council is the one we provided that includes an additional line providing that those workers will be paid at the rate of $16 per hour. So, that's the, that's the ordinance before council, and that you should consider moving forward.
Who would I find that ordinance?
It was provided to council by email, and it's included in the meeting.
Maybe I'm looking at the one on the website.
Christine, was this updated packet?
When you sent us the amended, that's.
Yes.
Yeah, I was gonna make a note of that anyway.
That's my fault for looking at the one on the website.
So, make sure we pass the amended one.
Right.
And maybe, for the record, and those who don't have that, maybe, do we wanna read the change that isn't on the current published website?
But we do, we do have it, it's just not on the website, okay?
Yeah, the ordinance is on it, it's just the updated one that is posted on the packet on the website is not the one.
Right. So, we should update that for the city's records. I think Emily's suggesting you just read the additional line of the.
Looking for it, I'm sorry.
So, in addition to what is on the website, the underlined version pursuant to West Virginia Code, Section 3-1-44D, the commission of election or poll clerks obtaining and delivering election supplies is required by West Virginia Code 3124, and returning them as provided in West Virginia Code 351 and 361 will be paid mileage up to a rate of reimbursement authorized for travel management role of the Department of Administration for each mile necessarily traveled in the performance of the service. Each head election commissioner, election commissioner, or poll clerk who works during early voting shall be paid the sum of $16 per hour for the hours or portions. early voting shall be paid the sum of $16 per hour for the hours or portions thereof worked.
Okay.
I just wanna point out that another solution to issues with our election would have been aligning with the county, and we wouldn't have trouble recruiting poll workers. But here we are, making our own elections more expensive. But I want people to be compensated fairly. I just think this is insane.
Is the question with take your.
Yes. Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Danielle Trumble?
Yes.
Dave Hershberger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Buganam?
Yes. Passes 7-0. Next, we have the consideration of approval of an ordinance amending Table 1139.12.1, establishing solid waste service fee. Look to you.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the, an ordinance that would propose an amendment to the existing solid waste service fee as discussed by representatives of Republic Services at your last meeting. As a brief recap, Republic Services or affiliate companies apply to the Public Service Commission for increases in the disposal fees charged by the Mountaineer Transfer Station. They operate that, and then in a parallel proceeding, applied for authority from the Public Service Commission to pass those charges on to customers at a rate of $2.43 per month for residential customers and a 4.17% increase in rate for commercial customers. Republic approached council in 2023, I believe, and requested pass through of that rate to Morgantown's customers. No action was taken, and Republic made that request again at the last committee of the whole city of Morgantown. And Republic do have a contract for solid waste services that provides that if Republic is approved an increase in the disposal fee by the Public Service Commission, then the parties would negotiate on any change in the established rates. Those rates are established by city council by ordinance, so a change in the rate would have to be made by ordinance. If council has any questions, I'd be happy to address those. There are also representatives of Republic Services here this evening if you would like to ask them any of those questions.
Do you have a motion before discussion?
Moved to approve for discussion purposes. Fails for lack of a second?
Does this mean, since we can't get any second motion, we just move on then?
That's right.
All right. Next, we have approval, consideration of approval of a first reading of an ordinance of the city of Morgantown, amending Section 305.04 of the city code, designate a portion of Raleigh Lane on a one-way street. And I look to you, Emily.
Thank you. So we had a lengthier discussion at the committee, the whole, talking about some of the right-of-way restrictions on Raleigh Lane, some of the improvements that we were looking at. City code does designate all roadways that are intended to be one-way. I know a constituent mentioned others that are one-way that are not listed in that. We are working with our engineering and public works to ensure that this is a comprehensive list. But specifically tonight, to talk about Raleigh Lane, we have, are working on setting up a meeting with the neighborhood. Initially, we were thinking, from the last meeting, that they were gonna look at some later dates. But I believe that meeting is tentatively scheduled for tomorrow at 5:30 to meet and kind of help better understand. Just as a reminder, there are sections of this roadway where the right-of-way is only 12 feet wide. And to put that into perspective, most parking spaces are about eight feet wide. And so trying to get two-way traffic on a 12-foot section of roadway is very limiting. And so we are proposing that this be included in the list of one-way streets going from the Evansdale neighborhood to Patterson with a right turn restriction off of Raleigh Lane turning on to Patterson. And we also have our city engineer and public works director here if we get real technical questions.
I don't know how you all would like to handle it. I would like to move to postpone this to a later time till the neighborhood can have the meeting, so that their, their ideas are incorporated into our designation and plan.
I would second that. I came prepared to say one way is better than another, but I didn't, I haven't been over there in the last few days. I didn't realize it was already reopened. So what's the, what's the rush now?
So I had a motion to table and a second.
I have a question, though, still.
I do.
What, what is our liability with that road reopened, and it's a city road that's not wide enough for two-way traffic?
You know, I always say, whenever there are lawsuits, people like to throw as many people on that list as possible.
It's been, they would say it's been like that for, it's been like that for 40 years.
I understand. I mean, yeah, it's been waiting forever.
Okay, I mean, I understand. You know, council often asks these questions. We try to, as Counselor Butcher mentioned, if, if there are questions about liability and potential legal action, we try to make sure to address those in a way that maintains attorney-client confidentiality for council. Be happy to look into that and follow up. As a, as a general matter, the city's responsible for the conditions of its roadways, but, you know, not responsible for every traffic accident that occurs.
So the MUB work was done since our last meeting?
Yes.
And it reopened.
The barriers were removed once the MUB work was completed.
Right.
So let's meet with the neighborhood tomorrow.
Yes.
I didn't know that meeting was happening. We asked to be notified, but this is notification, I guess. So I will try to clear my schedule.
It's just been worked on today. One of the citizens has been organizing it, and it was just, the time was just worked on today.
Yes, I still don't think a final location has been just determined. So it has been.
Percival, Percival Hall.
Fly in by the seat of our pants here. Got it.
Yes. We have been trying to be very quick and responsive in trying to get a meeting set up, and they have as well. And so I appreciate that. I know initially last week, they did not think they would be able to get people pulled together for this week, and we're looking at next week. But the reason why council has not been officially notified yet is because I, I still have it as a tentative hold on my calendar, because the person helping us arrange, I don't know if some of those details got finalized to the point where they're on my calendar yet, so.
For instance, the neighbors wanted it a little bit later, staff needed it a little bit earlier, so people are coming around and.
So we're shooting for tomorrow, 5:30, Percival Hall?
5:30?
Yeah.
PM?
5:30, Percival Hall.
Can someone call?
I was gonna say, I will, I will be at my kids' swimming.
I have plans at 6:30, but I didn't.
Mainly, this is an opportunity because the citizens haven't had a chance to pay the staff, so.
When we do consider, could we also consider adding Pocahontas Avenue from Collins Ferry to University Avenue one day?
That sure sounds smart.
Yeah.
Well, I think they're doing inventory of.
We discussed that at one point.
Yeah, since we know one.
The director of engineering said that he was working on a comprehensive.
Yeah, comprehensive.
That's correct. The, the engineering and public works department is looking to ensure any streets with posted signage as one-way streets are identified and forwarded to council for inclusion in Section 305.4.
So we can create a list.
That's right.
Streets that may not be listed to.
Yes, I think they've done that.
That we're aware of.
We are very outside of Robert's rules here, mostly the table is not supposed to be discussed.
I'm just hoping to postpone to a future date.
I believe I, I believe I was given like the finger, like, hold on. All right. I guess moving on, since we've tabled.
We need a poll. Take a roll.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Danielle Trumble?
Yes.
Dave Hershberger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Buganam?
Yes, it's tabled?
It's not tabled.
Well, yeah.
It's moved to a definite.
Moving, yeah.
To a future time.
All right. Sorry. It's been a long day.
Sorry, I just don't wanna have to figure out how to untable it.
I understand. It's been postponed.
Yeah.
To a later time.
Moving on to item E.
To a future meeting.
This is the consideration of approval of a first reading of an ordinance authorizing lease agreement at the Morgantown Municipal Airport. And Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an office space lease at the airport, at least to Charles Cady. I think an insurance office. It's, it's leased at the airport's standard rates for office space, so it's $243.75 per month. The airport requests that city council move the ordinance forward and pass.
Second.
Are we good to just go right to the roll call question? All right, thank you.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Danielle Trumble?
Yes.
Dave Hershberger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Buganam?
Yes. Resolution passes, 7-0. Next, we have consideration of approval of a resolution authorizing the contract for the city manager recruitment. Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager designated to engage Raftellus to conduct city manager recruitment, as city manager Kim Haas is retiring. The proposal is in your packet, and the, you know, the terms of the agreement would be consistent with the proposal submitted. Raftellus has worked with the city on both strategic planning and executive searches previously.
Move to approve.
Second.
Call the question.
All right.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Danielle Trumble?
Yes.
Dave Hershberger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Buganam?
Yes. And a consideration of approval of letter of support for the Light Project syringe service program. Emily or Ms. Jones?
We have the executive director of Health Right here with us. The state requires any syringe program to have the local approval. Both the current location of Health Right is in city limits, and the future location of Health Right will be in city limits as of January 1st, or whenever they move over there. So we do have this at the request of Ms. Jones on the agenda for council consideration. And I'm sure she'd be happy to answer any questions once you start discussing.
Any question?
Can you, just for the sake of the public, and whoever's still listening, just give us an overview of what you're asking, or what the light program is?
The Light Project is a harm reduction program with a syringe exchange, one-to-one, attached to it. It is part of a public health evidence-based program that works to make sure that people who use drugs are doing so safely, are not at severe risk of HIV, Hep C, MRSA, endocarditis, all of the infections that you could potentially get if you're not using clean syringes. It also focuses on a comprehensive program, so every time a person comes to the program, they are asked a series of questions. And that includes, are you interested in counseling? Do you need to see a medical professional today? Do you need wound care? Would you like to go to treatment? What are you interested in talking about today that we can help you with? And all of that is required of every individual that comes to the program. It is, it operates on a low barrier process, meaning that no one is forced into treatment or counseling. They have to come to that realization that they're ready on their own. It is documented that mandatory treatment is most often not successful. People relapse quickly, and they often overdose and die after they relapse, because they're, they haven't been using drugs for 30 days. And then when they go back out, they use the same amount that they used before, and their tolerance is too low, and they overdose. There's no requirement that people be in counseling, but all of that is available at every visit. And if we can't provide whatever the service is, then we make a referral to local organizations. And one thing I wanna clarify is that we may have only had 10 people that were interested in treatment and were actually taken to treatment in the last nine months. But that's not the only avenue at Health Right or in our community for people to get into treatment. So people go from primary care to treatment, people go from counseling to treatment through our program. And then there are many other avenues that people end up in treatment. So we're just part of a collective community response to the opioid crisis. We have listened carefully to some of the concerns that the community has had, and because of that, we structured our new facility in a different way so that there will be no long lines anymore. The amount of time that's available for people to come in will significantly increase, and they will not actually be coming into the clinic itself. There, the clinic will be a separate area. So they will be able to come right in the front door and go directly to harm reduction without sitting in the waiting room or actually being in the clinic, unless they have a need to be seen by a provider. So we will have cameras at the new building, inside and out. We have an outdoor camera now in the back of our building that we installed on our own, because we were having trouble with garbage. And so we think that our move will be a whole different way of operating. We will not be able to move before we have to reapply. So we reapply by the middle of December, and then we probably, it looks like our drop-dead date for moving is February 17th. We've had ongoing issues with right-of-way that are hopefully being corrected, but we pushed it out so that there's plenty of time for us to get everything done and be able to move on February 17th. So you should see a request for a moving truck to park in front of the building sometime before February 17th.
Probably a lot of moving trucks. One moving truck many, many times.
Yeah, one moving truck many, many times, yes.
Mayor, if I could just add, I, I had a chance after your last presentation, the board of Health Right reached out to me, he's former president for WDU Hospitals, and I, I had some questions that were concerns of mine that he was able to answer in a way that made me feel comfortable. And I just wanted to share a few of them, and that was that since, and I don't know how recently, but pre-COVID, people could get syringes for other people, and they can't do that anymore. That it is a one-to-one exchange for needles that was passed in '21 or '22.
2021. It started January.
And that this light program is funded through the CDC in private grants, so it's not local, community.
There's no state, local, or county funding. The, the federal funding is funneled through the state, but it's not actually state funding.
And, and then the last piece I thought was interesting was that there are no known HIV cases from dirty needles in Mont County, that there are no known. That there are no known HIV cases from Dirty Needles. And an HIV case costs $600,000. Typically, that person's on Medicaid and we're paying that to the state.
Yes.
And so those were just a few things that I had questions about that I had answered.
If you look at it from a money, a financial perspective, the cost of our program for an entire year is a third of what it would cost for us to treat someone with HIV. So it's really a cost-effective program when you're looking at, and Hep C as well, when you're looking at prevention. And you're absolutely right, Medicaid is paying for a lot of that.
I appreciate some of the changes that you all have implemented in the program and you're intending to implement at the new facility. I think that that'll make a difference. I appreciate your willingness to listen to community concerns. It definitely was staggering a bit to me anyways, when you were with us last time to hear how many needles had been distributed and the 10 people that had been referred to treatment. So thank you for addressing that and saying that there's other ways that don't get counted that are in there because that was going to be my question to you is how can we work together to encourage or incentivize or try to enter more, but if.
I totally agree with you. But we have not learned anything that easily incentivizes someone. The thing that works the best is developing a rapport and talking to people with lived experience. So we hire those people with lived experience, with drug use, and that are in recovery and being able to show that it's possible to get better and have a life and have a job. And that's what's the most important. But it doesn't happen overnight. It's an ongoing tug.
I, it's no secret that I spend a lot of time cleaning up trash. We've filled many dumpsters since the summer. A lot of old encampments, a lot of trash along the trails. I will say, after you were here last year, and my question to you was, the needles that I turn in, when I clean them up, do you all count that in your return rate? And you said, yes, I haven't turned another needle. I've been, I probably have a lot in my garage in various containers, but I stopped bringing those back to you just because I wanted to see. And your return rate actually increased significantly this year. So I appreciate that. I just wanted people to know, like, I have been coming across fewer. We do not, I mean, there was one cleanup I did in the previous 12 months where I probably picked up 200 behind Suncrest Middle School at one time. Now, when we go out and we find enough trash to fill a dumpster or more, I maybe find five. So it has decreased and I appreciate your efforts for that.
Thank you. Yeah.
I mean, I had to, let me see what Danielle just said. You know, I've made it kind of clear, I support your mission, I do. I wholeheartedly believe, you know, we need to keep spreading disease and down there. And it's always been my own concern has always been a safety concern.
Yep.
I work in a field that, you know, my colleagues or other first responders can get harmed by these.
Absolutely.
So that's always been my concern. But, you know, safety's my issue.
Yeah, I get it.
But like I said, you know, when we do the litter pickups, you know, we do find the needles still. And I have seen a slight decrease on campus. Anyway, I just, whatever you could do to, you know, keep that, you know, needles from leaving the properties and going wherever.
Yeah, that's the hard part. Once they leave us, we have to wait for the person to bring them back. And if they don't, they don't get any more syringes, but those syringes are then unaccounted for.
Yeah. Is that, like, do you have, I guess, accountability? So they are asked to bring the needles back?
Oh, absolutely.
So.
And they're given the container, they're given the container to actually put it in. It costs us over $700 a month because it's the amount, the weight of all the syringes is so heavy that we pay almost $700 to have them removed. So we're encouraged by the number that are coming back and seeing fewer. We are getting fewer calls. And when we go out, we used to go out and pick up 200 and now we go out and we pick up five, 10, which isn't necessarily acceptable, but that's what we're working toward. And the other issue is that prior to syringe exchange, we had syringes in the community as well. So I'm not sure we're going to get to a point until we no longer have the level of addiction that we have currently. I'm not sure we're going to get to a point where we're ever not going to see a syringe in the community.
Just for clarifying, I met with you and we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, months ago?
Yeah.
And you were explaining to me that it previously, if someone brought back 15, they come in packages of 10. You don't like to open packages. So you used to say, okay, so we'll give you two packages, you return. Now, you all are operating and if you bring back 15, you only get one full package, you know, you round down, round up?
Correct, correct, correct. The clients are not happy about that, but that's the only safe way that we can do it.
Because you can't give them an open package.
We would prefer not to because they're, when they leave us, we would like them to be sterile and clean.
Sterile.
Yeah. We could purchase individually wrapped syringes, but the cost is so exorbitant that it doesn't make sense to do that. So that's, I think that's also one of the reasons why our numbers of syringes are 178,000 or 180-some thousand for the last nine months. But they would, it would be higher if we were rounding up, for sure.
That's a, when, you know, somebody hears that number, they're, you know.
It's a lot.
I mean, that is a lot.
Let me just say that it's been much higher.
Yeah, I believe last year was higher.
Yeah, it was like 300,000. So we're, I think we're moving in the right direction.
So I appreciate your program from the same perspective that Dave was talking about, not necessarily just the financial cost of Pepsi or HIV, but the fact that then that can be passed to household members or other people that are not particularly using drugs. And possibly if there's shared use, which you're trying to avoid of needle, then someone else in the area. So absent a program such as yours, you end up with a little node here of people who have unfortunately passed through whatever means to others, those particular difficult-to-treat diseases. And add that to the frustration and problems associated with being a drug user. That's tough. So I really appreciate that you are willing to go through all the effort to establish a program like this and manage and run a program like this.
I can safely say that it would be much easier if we didn't do that.
Yes.
But we feel very strongly that it's an essential part of public health in our community and it's essential to the people that use the program.
So I appreciate that you're willing to do this.
Thank you.
And that this body has been willing to support it. And it's really a big.
Yes.
Deal to have a program such as yours in a community, even though we're frustrated very with drug use. So tell us what else we can do as a community to deal with this issue because it's, you know, it's been really frustrating. And I'm sure frustrating.
Can I also add to her conversation? So I think last year you said, if I remember correctly, there was 332 participants, I think you said, last year? And then this year, there's, I think you said there's 564 this year so far? Is that correct?
Last year it was 565.
Oh, stuck.
Yeah.
Oh, good.
And this year it's 540 so far.
Over the year, so it's.
So it's only, it's only the last nine months.
Okay, so are you seeing an increase in usage or a down?
A decrease, a decrease. What we're seeing, I can't say that. We're seeing a decrease in people that are using the program, a slight decrease.
Yeah.
Not everybody who uses in our community comes to our program.
I know.
They have other avenues for purchasing their own syringes or, you know, they don't need our services.
I have a note that says from January to August 2023, you had 820 participants, 156 of which were new.
Last year?
That's what my notes say.
Well, that would have been the year before.
Well, it says January to August 2023.
Okay. Well, I'm not. I possibly am not remembering correctly. It is late and I have been up since five.
I may have remembered.
You could send us a note of the.
But I can, I can update you on the change, but it is a decrease.
May I have a motion?
Move to approve?
Move to approve, second. Yeah. I, maybe more of a comment than anything. Just that the needles we find in our community would obviously without this program be much more dangerous to come across.
That's true.
So I think that's something to consider for folks when they're thinking about this program. The other thing is I think a lot of times, and I think this is, again, just more of a comment, but a lot of times when I hear about the program, people wonder like, they're sending folks out into their communities with needles. They can't use them. I'm sure Health Right would be okay with being a safe consumption site, but it's not legal for them to be, to do so.
We would consider that, but we're not sure that, I don't think it's legal.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, it's not legal, so.
And also, I don't think our state is ready for that.
Right, exactly right. But, so unfortunately, like, with it not being legal, they have to go, they have to be out in the community. They can't just stay at Health Right.
No, we will not allow that.
Unfortunately. But yeah, that's all.
Appreciate all the hard work that you did with this.
May I ask one more question?
Sure.
Are you seeing an increase or decrease in drug rehabilitation? Like people wanting to go to rehab, do your counseling? Just curious.
It's pretty steady, you know? It's kind of random and steady. It just depends on when people, last time I was here on October 29th, we had someone who walked in that day and said, I've had enough, I'm ready to go, I want to go to treatment. And we acted right then and there. But that's kind of how it operates, you know? People just get to a point where they say, I'm done, I can't do this anymore. And the winter time sometimes is better for people who want to get off the street and get into treatment. But sometimes, so it's important to understand also that we don't really know what works for treatment. And there's still research going on to figure out what actually really works in treatment. And so when people go through treatment, it's pretty much expected they're going to relapse. And having a harm reduction program allows them to relapse without sharing needles, not having Narcan, you know? It's, so it's really important. Most people, when we did a survey in the waiting room, almost everyone that we surveyed over a period of weeks told us that they had been in treatment three times. So that's, that's what the, the real issue is, we don't know what actually works for treatment. We're doing the best we can, but there's, there's more that we need to be doing treatment-wise.
Hopefully, they start rolling out some of that first foundation money.
We will be applying for it as quickly as it's available to us.
Well, thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Bill Kowicki? Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Danielle Trumble?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Boganum?
Yes. Letter is approved, seven zero. City managers report?
Thank you, Mayor. Just have a couple items to mention. I just wanted to say thanks to the state elected officials who were able to come to the special meeting, obviously to City Council as well for coming early for that as well. From what I was told, it was a great dialogue and much appreciated. It sounded, well, whenever I was able to arrive, we had a really great turnout. So I just wanted to say thank you to those delegates who came.
It was a good turnout.
This week, we received the city's portion of the countywide fire protection fund. This is in the amount of $40,366.04. So that was something that was originally passed at the state legislature and passed on to the county. And then the counties worked to distribute those. So thank you to the county for including us in that. Every little bit helps when we are trying to fund our fire department. And then lastly, last week, Wednesday, I was able to get our final passes picked up from our Mountain Line and we distributed those amongst the city and at the library. So I believe a press release had got out about that. But we have passes available through our police department, both in dispatch and through our special services unit and our social worker. Some of those went to the library and our ambassador program as well as our administration. We did have those available for Sunday. I don't think anybody had asked for them on Sunday. But then our social worker, Kelly Rice, was able to meet with people and talk about the bus program on Monday at the Red Door Church and was able to distribute those. So we are in the process. We had a couple of questions asked on Monday and got those clarified. And so I'm happy to kind of get that off the ground and we'll continue checking in with our staff who are the boots on the ground, working with those folks and continuing to work with Mountain Line. So that's all I had to report on tonight. But if anyone has any questions, let me know.
Thank you. A report from our city clerk.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So we've had a lot of talk about fire department, but I come with you, to you with good news. Finally get to talk about who our new fire chief is. And congratulations to our new fire chief, who is Gary Freshire. We also had promotional exam for captain and lieutenant. And our new captain is Chuck Campbell and our new lieutenant is Devon Zerota. So congratulations to those firefighters. They did work very hard and get where they are today. So with those promotions, we will, the Fire Civil Service Commission will be holding additional promotional exams. So the Fire Civil Service Commission will be meeting on December 12th to set that date and more than likely it will be around February or so of next year to fill those, to fill those positions. The Fire Civil Service Commission will also be holding their entry-level firefighter written exam this Thursday evening. And we have 15 candidates who will be testing. So we wish them the best of luck. I wanted to share a couple of things that our fire department will be doing over the holiday. And on the 4th, December 4th, WDU Children's organizes a parade of lights for the kids. So you could go there and see, last year, over 50 vehicles participated in the parade. Most were fire, police, and EMS vehicles. All the vehicles turn on their emergency lights and drive through the parking lot. The event ends with all of the first responders standing outside of the hospital with LED lights waving up at all the children. So maybe. So maybe folks can go out and, and watch that wonderful parade. And in addition to that, W Children's will have a holiday event on the 13th. Morgantown Fire Department's ladder truck will take Santa up in the bucket to wave at the kids from the outside. After that, Santa and Morgantown Fire Department personnel will enter children's to help Santa hand out goodies and presents while visiting with the kids. The duty crews will be handing, handling this event, so special thanks to them for their time. So kudos to the Morgantown Fire Department. And then lastly, with our poll worker ordinance that we passed, that you all passed today, I just want to say thank you. And if folks are interested in being a poll worker, we do have a poll worker application on our website at MorgantownWV.gov and it's very easy to click on the link and apply online so that we can go ahead and get that started. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. City chairman?
Thank you, Mayor. I will echo the thanks to council and our legislators and the DOH staff for attending the legislative session this evening. I thought that was an encouraging discussion all around, but particularly with the DOH and we'll look forward to following up with them along with our director of engineering and public works on opportunities for collaborative agreements for roadway repair and also the other, the other work tasks that council discussed, as well as the funding options for the airport runway extension and, and possibly looking at the legislation options for traffic enforcement and, and getting in touch with the contractors association as well to, to look at collaborating. That's all I have to report this evening.
Thank you.
Which way are you going?
Ah, go to Bill.
Why don't we ever start in the middle?
Good point. Living's first.
Well, okay. Short, the South Park Association of Neighbors will meet tomorrow, which is the combination of the November, December meeting and it will be at the First Christian Church is the corner of Covin and Grant, but you would enter from the Edgewood side. There's a door that takes you to the lower level and that's where the meeting will be held. Begins at 6:30 for social, 7 for the meeting. The only other thing I'll mention is that there's a current survey being distributed, quizzing people about the activities that they think that the South Park Association of Neighbors should or could sponsor or promote. So look for that and please, if you, it's a very short, three-question checkoff response kind of thing that is helpful in determining what is really appropriate for that community. And the only other thing I'd have to say is congratulations, kid.
Thanks.
Under 40, huh? Well, you deserve it. And I'm glad to see that they, I don't know who slipped you in, but you have a friend somewhere.
I'm just glad that I have it in writing that I'm under 40.
For, for a little long.
Yeah.
My kids always quick to call me old.
I don't have anything to report tonight, but congratulations, Joe.
So I already congratulated Joe, but I thought that that was pretty cool and nice So as far as Raleigh Lane, I've been calling more people and asking more questions about this situation with Raleigh Lane. And somehow, and also there was a comment this evening, somehow there seems to be more traffic in the general area this year and maybe some last year compared to other years. So more traffic on University Avenue, more traffic on Patterson. Over the years, there have been several ways to get out from the neighborhood that have been eliminated, such as in front of the President's House and the, the route that goes through campus that's, what is it, east? What's that road name? Damien will know. Anyway.
Evansdale.
Just Evansdale Drive, I think it's called.
Yeah, Evansdale Drive.
And then they were mentioning that they felt as though at Evansdale Drive that the, the traffic light was malfunctioning and that they had called it in a couple of times and it seems to have issues of just like not changing. I don't know if it was for a long time or just not changing. They can tell you more about that tomorrow night. And that instead of just during busy times of day, there being excessive traffic in that area, kind of all times of day. And I just noticed some of it on Patterson because I turn in partway down Patterson to get to my house and then I just see the backup on Patterson up pretty often to a museum and the Christian Mission Alliance Church. And so what happens is people who are in that neighborhood at certain times of day, even like at 3:00 in the afternoon or 2:00 something in the afternoon, they'll go out of their neighborhood and they'll do a bunch of things and they won't ever go back to their house until later because they know that once they get, they make their way back to their house, then they can't get back out again. And so that's both on university and on Patterson, so they really feel kind of claustrophobic. So it's, seems, what seems like sort of a shortcut or convenience has become more like an essential to them. And so that's why I think it's good that we meet with them and have them heard and think about ways that we can use whatever we have at our disposal to help the situation. So, there we go. And that's it for me. I'm looking forward to upcoming holiday season and I enjoyed Thanksgiving and I just appreciate everyone in the city and all the hard work. It may seem as though we're voting for and against different things in, for whatever reasons, and picking what will happen and what won't happen, but I think that we're really using our best hearts and minds to determine what way to go on many of these issues and keeping citizens and their interests in mind. So thank you all. Bye now.
Bye now. Just an update from Morgantown Community Resources. The city and the county did approve funding for the winter cold weather shelter, so the cold weather hit much quicker than maybe was anticipating, as if it's not December, but it, it has gotten quite cold. So Morgantown Community Resources met earlier today. We have completed some renovate, not renovations, repairs, I guess, to that facility. There had been a flood and it needed a little bit of sewage backup and it, it needed a bit of work. So those are complete and it's my understanding that Catholic Charities has ordered the supplies that they need and they're in the process of doing the hiring so that they can open as soon as possible. The date that has been given is December 15th. They are trying to get open a little sooner, if at all possible, but that is at their discretion. In the meantime, I will remind everyone that, I mean, as of today, the triage shelter that Catholic Charities runs at Hazel's House of Hope did have one bed open and the day room at the facility remains open if anyone needs to get in out of the cold, at least during the day. There are meals, snacks, laundry, showers, all available. Other than that, I'll just say that I very much enjoyed Small Business Saturday in downtown. Main Street did a great job as always and there are a lot of downtown events that you can use to support our small businesses coming up throughout the month. I think every weekend day between now and Christmas, there are artisan markets and things like that where you could purchase gifts or something for yourself. And there are also fun events like the Santa Crawl that will take you through several of our local establishments. So definitely follow Main Street's social media for more information on all of those things, but can't wait to see everyone downtown in the coming weekends.
And the Moonlight Market was cold.
The Moonlight Market was freezing. I have not been through there so quickly since it started.
Nice, it was nice though.
Certainly.
So the South Hills Holiday Potluck is this Sunday. I know there's a little bit of a conflict with the Human Rights Commission award ceremonies. The, the event for the South Hills is at the Marilla Center and the idea is to have dinner from 4:45 to 5:30 and then we're going to have a brief neighborhood meeting at 6:15. So if you're able to try to combine the two, 6:15 is the timeframe we're looking at doing the neighborhood meeting portion. There will be a Morgantown Utility Board meeting next Tuesday, a week from today. If there are any items or questions you all have, you want to, would like me to bring forward, please let me know. And just to, just like a real small update, but Monreal Trail Conservancy is working with the engineering company, Triton Engineering, who is going to build the bridge over to the industrial park on a, kind of a right-of-way agreement that Ryan's helping us with. And we hope to have something worked out with them. I think they would like to start this, this winter on the construction of that bridge. And so that will be downstream about a half mile from the current bridge going over the river on I-79 is where that new bridge will be and go into the industrial park directly. So that's all I.
Downstream of that bridge.
Mm-hmm. North is downstream in that scenario.
Toward us.
I have a question for you. Does Alice have donkey bags for her?
I can ask, but I don't know.
Does this, well, okay, I'm lucky.
We can, we can ask for extras to be left out.
Bring your own. Or you could supply her with one ahead of time.
I don't have much to report. I just wanted to, it'll probably be in the newspaper and everything, but really appreciative of the DOH for coming and attending our legislative meeting. Was kind of unexpected, at least for me. I don't know if for people else too that they were coming, but.
That was cool.
Yeah, was impressed by that and glad that they were there. I think that's a big step for our community, so I appreciate them coming and the more we can encourage that kind of behavior, I would, that's.
Thanks to my governor, Seton.
Seton, yes. Correct. But that's all I have to report.
You stole my gratitude. I was going to say thank you to Senator Alvario for having the DOH show up to the meeting.
Very good.
We have our first ward neighborhood meeting on Monday, MTAC, at 6:30. And congratulations to Chuck, who's here for his new promotion, as well as I would also like to say congratulations to our own Annie York for winning the Governor's 2024 West Virginia Human and Civil Rights Excellence in Advocacy Award as well. And some quick MMMA updates. One of the things I was most excited about at our meeting was the feasibility study for a pedestrian bridge that goes over Dona's Boulevard from the first ward. And that's from Kinley Horn. And also I would like to say a quick gratitude to Council Kueke, who I was struggling with remembering some of these things, so thank you for helping remind me. And the exit 155 ramp, which is with the traffic signal, which will be super helpful for many of the high school kids that go over to Myland Park for many of their events, my kid included, who will be taking part in the swim meet tomorrow, which is why I cannot make it to the neighborhood meeting. So hopefully you all can pass on some information. And also appreciation for the adjustments for the Capefords and Trail lighting fund. And that is all of my notes, so. Oh, and I hope everybody had a wonderful Thanksgiving. I did find a feather in my turkey this year, right before I come to it, which was weird. That's not, that's not a joke. It's weird.
Wow. So are we ready to move pursuant to West Virginia State Code Section 6-9A4B12 to discuss matters protected by attorney-client privilege?
Second. Thank you, question? Quick, you're.